Good morning. Thank you for being here with us virtually. My name is Reagan Smith. I'm General Counsel of the United States Copyright Office, and this is the first day, the first section of our hearings for the Section 1201 rulemaking. I think first we will start with introducing ourselves from the Copyright Office side along with NTIA. So Ms. Chauvet.
Good morning. My name is Anna Chauvet. I serve as Associate General Counsel.
Ms. Gray.
My name is Mark Gray. Hi, everyone. I'm Mark Gray. I'm an attorney advisor here at the Office of General Counsel.
Ms. Kern.
Melinda Kern, Ringo Fellow.
Thank you. Mr. Cheney.
Good morning. Stacy Cheney, Office of Chief Counsel at NTIA.
And we'll introduce the panelists in a second, but first I wanted to sort of explain our format now that we are all virtual, as well as the hearings. I think many of you have participated in the Section 1201 rulemaking before, but I will go over how it will work since not everyone has been there. The goal of our hearings is to analyze and further develop the administrative record in relation to the proposed exemption to the anti-circumvention provisions in Section 1201 of the Copyright Act. We are focused on clarifying and honing in on issues which were surfaced in the written comments, particularly areas of dispute where the record may be a bit patchy. So this first session will focus on a proposed adjustments to the exemption that currently permits circumventions of technological protection measures, protection, motion pictures for disability service professionals, and educational settings to create an accessible version. So a couple of logistics. The Copyright Office and NTIA will be moderating it. We can pose questions and call on you to respond either verbally, but you may also use the Zoom feature of raise hand, or you may physically wave, and we'll try to get to you. If you can please try to keep your response relatively brief into the question posed. I think we'll have time to air out all of the issues. Secondly, there's three sessions today. They can all be accessed by the same Zoom link we're using now for those who are watching, so there's no need to, you can stay clicked on all day. Anyone having technical difficulties, you can type in the Q and A or the chat, and someone from the Copyright Office will respond and help. And finally, I wanted to let people know that our last session of the week is an audience participation session where members of the public may provide comments to the record, or perhaps panelists who did not sign up for a particular session. There will be a link in the chat to a Survey Monkey where you can indicate what you would like to speak on, and we're asking people to limit comments to around three minutes on any of the topics at issue in the study. So next, let's call on the participants. If you could please just explain your name and your affiliation. We'll start with some broad questions and then move from there. So I think to start, Mr. Band.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Band. I represent the Library Copyright Alliance.
Thank you. Professor Reed.
Thanks, Ms. Smith. Blake Reed, Director of the Samuelson Glushko Technology Law and Policy Clinic at Colorado Law. We're here representing the Association of Transcribers and Speech-to-Text Providers, ATSP. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Would you like to have your student attorneys introduce themselves?
Yeah, that'd be great if we could go with Ms. Hamilton and Mr. Goodstein, or Mr. Goodstein, excuse me.
Good morning. My name is Dakota Hamilton, and I am also part of the Samuelson Glushko Technology Law and Policy Clinic, under Professor Reed.
Good morning. My name is Scott A. Goodstein, and I am a student attorney at the Samuelson Glushko Technology Law and Policy Clinic with Professor Reed.
Thank you, both of you for being here. We appreciate it. Now, Mr. Marx, please.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Dean Marx, and I am outside to AACS LA and DVD CD. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Copola, I'm not sure if I'm saying that correctly.
Hi, thanks. My name is Jason Capculla, the Assistant Director of Captioning and Interpreting at West Virginia University and past President of the Association of Transcribers and Speech-to-Text Providers.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
Good morning. Matthew Williams from Mitchell-Silberberg &amp; Nupp. I'm representing the Joint Creators and Copyright Owners.
Thank you. And Mr. Taylor.
Good morning. David Taylor, representing DVD Copy Control Association and AACS LA Licensing Administrator.
Ms. Smith, I'm not sure if it's just me, but I think we may have lost your audio.
Oh, it was not just you. Apologies. So I'll remind everyone to please speak slowly and clearly, including myself, for the benefit of the captioners, and to make sure your audio is not muted. I think before we dig into all of the details, I wondered if Professor Reed, you wanted to explain from the perspective of the requesters, what are the key features we should focus on for the hearing? Because I think there is, we have found through the briefings, there's been a lot of commonalities in areas that are not in dispute. What do you think are the remaining areas to focus on?
If it's okay with you, Ms. Smith, I may hand it off to Ms. Hamilton to take that on.
Good morning. So from the commenters' response comments that we received, we believe that there are two main areas that still need to be discussed. These include the proactive remediation expansion and the accessible versions of sufficient quality expansion. So we are hoping, with the proactive remediation expansion, we are hoping to explicitly include in the exemption that disability services professionals may proactively remediate videos that they expect to be used in classrooms. And additionally, that when videos have captions that are of insufficient quality, they can remediate those as well.
And perhaps before we dive in, I just wanted to extend our appreciation to Mr. Williams, Mr. Taylor, and Mr. Marx. It seems like a lot of the requests were agreeable, and we appreciate the understanding, and I think the clarifying questions and the comments were helpful. And hopefully, we can get to the bottom of, it seems like there are some fairly minor differences and minor miscommunications, but I think we can get through all of them today. So appreciate the spirit of cooperation on this one.
I see some nodding. Mr. Williams, perhaps, would you like to, do you agree with Ms. Hamilton? Is there anything you would like to say as an opening?
Yes, thank you, and thanks to Blake for that acknowledgement. We did want to try to reach agreement on as many of these proposals as possible, and we did, I think, basically achieve that with the exception of the two that Ms. Hamilton mentioned. My clients definitely take these issues seriously, and so we appreciate the opportunity here to talk through the points of clarification that we asked for. On the proactive remediation issue, I think Ms. Hamilton described it as works that they do anticipate using in the classroom. And so I think that might get us close to what we proposed, which is essentially, if it's something that's on a course syllabus or something where the school already knows that it's going to be used in a class, that it was used the prior semester, for example, we're okay with the proactive remediation there, even though it's arguably not required by the disabilities statutes. What, you know, we were concerned about is more of a exemption that basically allows for the entire library catalog to be circumvented in advance so that when something is added to a class, it can be rendered accessible or basically the whole catalog is in advance rendered accessible. And some of our concerns with that relate to the fact that there is a market check requirement here, and there's some other parts to the existing exemption that would perhaps be read out of the exemption if the proactive remediation went too broadly. So that's our primary concern on that issue. And I will say that in one of the written statements that was submitted, I believe it was the one under an anonymous name, there was a mention of school guidelines that sometimes require captioning on every single video that is shown to a class, even if there is no disabled student or faculty member in that class. So I do have some questions about exactly how broad this may go, but I do think we're pretty close to agreement on it. And with the sufficient quality, as you know, we were just hoping to come up with some reasonable objective standard that we could point to. The proponents have, you know, kind of questioned whether the FCC standards would be the right place to look, and we're open to considering other standards, including some of the ones the FCC is looking at in their processes. But we would just like the regulation to have some contours beyond just sufficient quality.
Well, thank you both. I think the Office really appreciates everyone coming here to the roundtables in a constructive manner rather to dig into the issues. I think I will now turn it over to Ms. Chauvet.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. One other area where there does seem to be some disagreement is about whether the exemption should be expanded to cover advanced access content system technology, also known as AAC/ACS2 technology. For the proponents, your reply comments note that in the last rulemaking, the Office declined to extend the exemption to AAC/ACS2 technology because of the lack of record at that time. So for this rulemaking, do you have any evidence to support a finding that AAC/ACS2 technology is adversely affecting non-infringing uses or that it is sufficiently similar to AAC/ACS1 technology to be covered under the current exemption? Mr. Reed, and I'm sorry, if you could please just wait for us to call on you just for the purpose of the captioner and the court reporter. So please go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Absolutely. Apologies for butting in Ms. Chauvet. If I could turn over to Mr. Goodstein for this one.
Mr. Goodstein, go ahead.
Thank you. We weren't explicit in our comment regarding AAC/ACS2 because we feel that there is no real distinction in principle between captioning a video that is in AAC/ACS format and captioning a video that's in AAC/ACS2 format. And teachers certainly aren't choosing their classroom videos based on whether a video is in AAC/ACS format or AAC/ACS2 format. The statute is, or the exemption is concerned with the rights of users. So we feel that it doesn't make sense to try to divide the exemption up by marginal differences in format.
If I could, Ms. Chauvet, just to add, you know, with that, we understand that the Office declined to draw, or to accept an argument along those lines in the previous rulemaking and consulting with our clients and disability services professionals. It doesn't sound like there is a strong need to circumvent AAC/ACS2 videos. That hasn't been a significant, a significant number of requests into disability services offices. We would urge the Office to consider the likelihood of changed circumstances over the next three-year period. The, you know, I don't think anyone expected the uptake in the use of videos that has occurred over the last year as learning has shifted online as a result of the pandemic. And so the modalities of what instructors and faculty are using in the classroom has changed dramatically in the last year, and Mr. Capculla can speak to the immense increase in the number of videos that need to be captioned. We'd urge the Office to consider whether to draw fine-grained distinctions, like the version number of a particular DRM, when it's considering all the equities that are at play in this exemption, given that the needs are likely to shift over time, and indeed to avoid this sort of incremental need to come back and relitigate aspects of the exemption as facts on the ground change. The existing class, which covers streaming video, DVD, and AAC/ACS, is one of the really nice features of that class is that it has been broadly scoped and has avoided these sorts of fights about particular DRM schemes and the extent to which they proliferate in the market. But, you know, we wanted to be straightforward about that's, you know, AAC/ACS 2.0 and 2.1 have not been a significant factor at this point for disability services folks.
Mr. Marx and Mr. Taylor, Mr. Taylor, do you have your hand raised? Why don't you go ahead and respond, please?
Thanks. I do think that the record actually matters in this case because the exemption that we're talking about, we're talking about modifications. And the record that has been built has been presented on DVDs and Blu-ray discs, and whether or not the captioning and audio description in those products are sufficient or need to be circumvented for the purposes of making captioning more readily accessible. And in this case, the records just simply, as Mr. Reed has indicated, has not indicated that there is a big need in this area. Maybe it's probably because that the titles that come out on UHD Blu-ray are more of the big blockbuster hits that you would expect the content providers to already have captioning in and audio description in. And therefore, you don't see a big request in the student services offices to assist with captioning those products.
Thank you, Mr. Marx.
Thank you very much. I just add on to that that actually is for a different format, the ultra-high-definition format of the film. And as Mr. Taylor said, because it's a newer format, I'm not aware of titles that don't have captioning or audio description in that format. And so that's another reason why there wasn't a justification to circumvent that particular technology. It really is, and an ultra-high-definition disc, AAC2 won't play on a standard DVD or Blu-ray player. And so it really isn't like, oh, well, it's just, it's really a different. I do want to also say how much we appreciate the collaborative work and the comments of oral and written from Mr. Reed and others to work towards consensus in this area. And it's really much appreciated, and we're making this all about.
Thank you. So moving to an area where there was agreement about permitting reuse. So proponents, you propose expanding the exemption to allow reuse of accessible materials that have been created by using the exemption. Opponents did not object to this expansion. Very briefly, just for purposes of the record, will you explain why this expansion is necessary?
I might actually defer.
I'm sorry, I just need to call on you for the court reporter. Please go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Thank you. I apologize. I'll do my best to stop stepping in like that. I wonder if I might call on Mr. Capculla to speak to the need for reuse and the need to, or the desire among disability services offices to not re-caption, re-describe materials?
And just to expand on that, so if the existing exemption were not expanded to include reuse, would it adversely affect non-infringing uses? Mr. Reed.
Yes, I think that's correct. And I think what Mr. Capculla can speak to is that the, basically, without that expansion, what disability services offices are encountering is the need to basically go and redo captions, basically throw away captioned versions of video and do them again when they're, when a video is reused in a subsequent semester in a class that uses a video repeatedly. But Mr. Capculla is better positioned to speak to that than I am.
Mr. Capculla, do you have anything briefly to add?
Yeah. So as Mr. Reed pointed out, you know, we do have a high volume of videos that we receive for accommodation captioning, and that has really gone up since the pandemic over the last year. Just to kind of provide a context for that, in a normal year, we might expect to see 75 videos per semester as far as requests go for captioning. And this past fall, we received 749 videos, and we are at 593 now with four weeks left in this semester. So the pandemic really has pushed things online, and we do see a lot more video being used and created. You know, quite a bit of it is whiteboard video and lecture. And so in that kind of new environment, we're having to find ways to meet that demand. And we do expect that some of that will be here to stay even after the pandemic kind of passes. And so in that scenario, when you have a class like Psychology 101, for instance, that has perhaps 20 sections, and they have a standard curriculum across those 20 sections, and that curriculum stays the same, or stays fairly consistent from year to year, if we were to caption that video over and over and over again, or caption it and then destroy it, and then have to re-caption it the next semester and continue to do that, that would represent a significant amount of time that really doesn't make a whole lot of sense and really kind of stands in the way of our providers doing other captioning or their other work. Their primary duty is not to be closed captioners, it's to be live transcribers in classes, and that takes about 80% of their time. So we wouldn't have to shift resources away from that if we were able to use as much, if we were able to use and reuse and store securely the captioning that we've done.
Great, thank you. Ms. Kern, I believe you have a question relating to the expansion to faculty and staff?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chauvet. So I have a quick question. So the proponents propose expanding the existing exemption to allow circumvention to provide accessibility services for faculty and staff in addition to students. This was an aspect of the proposed expansion that the opponents didn't object to. So if the proponents could briefly explain why this expansion is necessary, and if the proposed exemption isn't expanded to include faculty and staff, would that have an adverse effect on non-infringing uses?
Mr. Reed, did you want to respond?
If I could, I'll turn it to Ms. Hamilton for this one.
Ms. Hamilton, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. So the root of this exemption is that, first, there are many instances where drawing the line between instructor, faculty, staff aren't super clear-cut, and expanding this exemption this way, we don't see any downside necessarily. And additionally, there are circumstances where faculty and staff need something like a training video, for example, that will go through disability services offices and be used in an educational context that we don't think is necessary to limit with this exemption.
Okay, thank you. So one other thing I wanted to ask for the proponents is about the removal of the reference to disability laws in the existing exemption. Your class eliminates references to, like, the American Disabilities Act, which is not, is just one of the disability laws referenced in the existing exemption. And instead, your proposed language says students, faculty, or staff with disabilities. So why should the reference to disability laws be removed? And what, more importantly, like, why is that necessary? Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I'll be happy to take that one. I think that was part of the mechanical change that we suggested for allowing proactive remediation. And I think this gets to comments that Mr. Williams raised in his opening, and perhaps it would be helpful for us to sort of move there at this point. Obviously, there are a lot of circumstances. A student comes in, makes an accommodation request where captioning or description is very, very clearly required, and the contours of it are very clearly required by disability law. There are also a number of areas where the state of disability law and the extent to which it applies to a circumstance. So thinking about proactive remediation as an example, where the extent to which disability law binds the university is not clear. And might actually, there might actually be sort of diverging opinions on that within the university. So just to give you an example, there may be university counsel taking a fairly narrow view of that question to avoid, to try to avoid liability. There may be, there may be folks involved in setting the university's accessibility policy that take a broader view of that. There may be faculty governance boards that take yet a third view of that question. That view may change over time, for example, as the Department of Justice, as it often does, engages in settlements with an institution. And as part of the settlement, a university may agree to take a more proactive approach. So what we're trying to get at there is basically so that disability services offices don't have to, when they are faced with a request from a faculty member or something comes into their work stream, that they don't have to then engage university counsel and say, is it okay for us to caption this? Is it okay for us to describe this? That if it's within their judgment, it's within the request that's come in pursuant to university's policy, perhaps, that they can say, yeah, we've got a legitimate reason to go about, to go about captioning or describing this, and that we don't have to sort of ask fine-grained questions about the extent to which disability law applies. And, you know, creating this sort of additional headache of engaging with university counsel for a disability services office to figure out if it's okay in a particular circumstance.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I guess, so the existing exemption from the last rulemaking exists because disability laws create an obligation for disability services offices to create accessible versions. So I guess my question is, well then, why, if that's the reason for the exemption, why is it unreasonable to eliminate the, or to keep the reference to the disability laws in the exemption? Mr. Reed.
So I think, I think the reason that we eliminated those specific references in our proposed language was just to accommodate the insertion of the proactive possibility. I think if the, if the Office were to recommend language that included a reference to those laws, but otherwise were able to accommodate proactive remediation to the extent we've requested, I don't think we would object to the continued inclusion of the reference to the ADA and IDEA, and I think Section 504 is in there as well. I don't think anyone is concerned about those. We just want to make sure that that doesn't, that those aren't read to preclude, for example, proactive remediation. Or to the other point that Mr. Williams raised, that they're not read to preclude the improvement of quality. You know, and quality is another area where the extent to which disability law can be a lens to determine whether quality is sufficient enough, really difficult problem. And so we just want to make sure that the inclusion of those references to disability law aren't read as restrictions on the ability of disability services professionals to exercise their judgment, comply with university policies, and so forth.
Can I ask, do you think that's something the Office can clarify in the preamble? Is there, yeah, that's a question.
Mr. Reed.
Can I ask, Ms. Smith, by the preamble, do you mean the preamble to the exemption language itself in the CFR?
I guess I mean the register's recommendation.
Yeah.
Or the librarian's preamble in the federal register rule.
Yeah, I think that clarification is always helpful, and in particular, as we reviewed with disability services professionals, this exemption in particular, many of the clarifications in the record last time, or sorry, in the final recommendation last time around, for example, around the commercial availability requirement were quite helpful. So I think that would be a great place to do it. You know, there are there are a lot of different different ways to get there, and, you know, that 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 could make sense.
Thank you, Mr. Band. Do you have your hand raised? Would you like to add to that?
Just very briefly, I just wanted to amplify what what Blake was saying and said also, just just because, you know, the 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 language of the references to the ADA and the other disability statutes shouldn't in any way be limiting. You know, the whole point is is to make, I mean, the goal here is accessibility. And you know, there's no reason to to limit that in any way. And and there's no reason for those other statutes to see as to be seen as a ceiling. And and so, you know, and it seems that everyone is on the same wavelength here, so there's no reason to to have artificial limitations.
Thank you. So if the office were to eliminate the reference to the ADA and other disability laws in the existing exemption, how then should disabilities be defined? And this is really more so that people who want to circumvent know that the exemption can apply to their circumstances. Mr. Reed?
So I think I think a broad-based reference to to captioning and description to serve faculty and staff with disabilities accompanied by a clarification, perhaps in the in the final rule or in the register's recommendation, that it's intended to take an expansive view of the 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 particular disabilities that are served by by captions, which which, by the way, and description, which, by the way, may be quite extensive. They they may be what we would typically think of. People with with hearing disabilities that would rely on captions, students who are blind or visually impaired who might rely on description, but might might also be folks with intellectual and cognitive disabilities who rely on captioning for for basically educational purposes to help help make the content more accessible. So I think a broad-based reference, coupled with the fact that the exemption is focused on disability services professionals, I think the people that you have executing the 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 use here are going to be very well-suited to understand what the scope, reasonable scope of disabilities is. And I think some language in the, like I say, in the in the the surrounding orders that suggest that it's not intended to be a narrow conception of disabilities, but whatever in the judgment of a disability services professional sort of counts there, I think I think that would be a workable approach. Alternatively, if if the office feels uncomfortable with that, making some reference to the scope of disabilities in the Americans with Disabilities Act might be obviously coupled with the the Americans with Disabilities Amendments Act. That would be another, I think, satisfactory way to encompass the 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 relevant scope.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Williams, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you for that. I think the office is right to to ask these questions, given that the the real heart of the fair use analysis in the last cycle was based on the need to comply with these other statutes. So I do think it's worth considering finding a way to keep them as referenced in the exemption or to rely on them in the recommendation. We, after reviewing the filings, did not feel it was appropriate for us to take the position that they must basically prove that they would be violating those statutes in order to do something like proactive remediation. The current exemption could be read that way to say unless you're violating the law, then then you can't engage in this good work. So we took the position that we're okay with that, even though arguably some of these things may not be required by the disability statutes. But that said, I do think it's worth continuing to use them as a benchmark of sorts to to speak to the type of conduct and the type of disabilities that we're really thinking about here. We just don't want there to be some technical error committed by disability services officer who's trying to do good work, but accidentally did something that doesn't comply with the statute. We don't feel like that should cause them to lose the benefit of the exemption. So that's where we were coming from on on that issue. And we can speak hopefully again later about the sufficient quality point.
Yes, we'll definitely get to that later. Mr. Marks, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you very much. Just to follow up with Mr. Williams, we we agree with that, and I feel that Mr. Reed came has already articulated some really good words. We're talking about disability services officers and professionals, and I think we have confidence in their good faith judgment and the notion that I don't think any of of us were that a disability service general counsel of your institution every time they sought to, you know, do remediation. So I think the notion of this and of the disability air engagement in these activities boss could yeah, burden. I want to thank for, you know.
Thank you. So proponents, your initial comments stated about one-third of disabilities on our campus request accommodation, but that does not obviate our responsibility to provide equal access to the other two-thirds who choose not to self-identify. So under the existing exemption, wouldn't the student or faculty member obtain the remediated version from the disability services office? How does the proposed exemption address individuals who do not self-identify? Mr. Reed?
So I I think, you know, when when we're talking about remediated materials, you know, that's a typical path, obviously, is for a student to request accommodation, to work closely with a faculty member with the disability services office, kind of in tandem to make sure that they that they receive the materials. But another another path is, and this is increasingly true of faculty members, which I can speak to in my my kind of personal capacity, which is that that we're increasingly aware that there may be students with disabilities in our in our courses who don't self-identify. And for example, in a law school, we have a number of students with disabilities who don't self-identify and don't go through the formal accommodations process because it creates significant risk for them, for example, to apply for to sit for the bar exam. So, you know, there's there's a lot of litigation about the extent to which a disability can be used to bars, student for sitting for the bar. So we have a lot of students who don't go through the formal accommodations process and request it, but may reveal to us privately or may may come to us and say, listen, I'm really struggling in class. I think I might need an accommodation of some sort. It would really help me if the videos that we're showing here, if we could, if we could get captions for those. And at a university like Colorado, I can actually go to our disability services office runs a captioning service, and I can go seek, I can go see captions for the videos I'm using, independent of an accommodation request. So that's just an example of the kinds of informal approaches to accessibility that for very good reasons may not run through a formal accommodations process. I don't know if Mr. Kepkala has got anything to to add to that, but may have some additional thoughts.
Mr. Kepkala?
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, what we're advocating for is a proactive approach rather than a reactive approach to accessibility. So accommodations are a reactive, you know, a student requests an accommodation, and then we provide it. But there, as Mr. Reed pointed out, there are a lot of students who who don't do that for whatever reason. Perhaps they don't recognize the extent of their disability. Perhaps they don't feel comfortable, you know, disclosing and self-advocating, you know, with regard to their disability. And so if we are taking a stance that video content can and and perhaps should be made accessible regardless, then students who are in that class are receiving an accessible experience. They don't have to wait for accommodation. You know, and for that matter also, I would add that there are also scenarios in which we have students who we who do request accommodation, who we know need accommodation semester to semester, but just haven't gone through renewing their accommodation for a given semester and won't be able to have the the interactive discussion with their faculty member with with regards to implementing that accommodation until the first week of the semester. I would say if we have seven hundred videos that need captioning, we'd like to be able to get working on those in the interim periods between semesters, knowing that the student is in that class and that the student is going to want those accommodations. We wouldn't want to be restricted or waiting just because they haven't had a chance to to have that authorization be processed yet.
Thank you. I have one follow-up question that I see Mr. Cheney has a question also. So what you're just talking about with students who have not self-identified or who don't want to go through like the formal accommodation processes, is that the reason why you're proposing to take out the limitation of necessary accommodation? Just just want to clarify your position, please, Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I I would say it actually goes, so that's certainly part of it. But I think you also see, and and let me preface this answer by saying we should have a complicated mental model of how disability services and accessibilities play out in a university context. It's not the same at every university. There are universities that have very small disability services offices who insist on having a formal accommodation request basically to provide any services to a student. There are universities at the other end of the spectrum that are adopting proactive policies that say we want as a matter of universal design for all of our courses to be accessible because we'd actually like to advertise that to our students, perhaps because we serve a population of students with disabilities or a significant population of students with disabilities. And then you've kind of got everything in between. So I think what we're trying to get at here is to enable disability services offices who are at universities who don't take that sort of bare minimum approach of saying we will only respond to accommodations who say, you know what? We have students in here all the time who who fall through the cracks of the accommodations process, but we know them. Or we have faculty members who know them. We have things that 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 don't quite fit in. Or we have a broader campus policy that says we really ought to be proactive because that's a core part of our educational mission. And we might actually be getting getting sort of direction from on high. We want to be able to accommodate all of those different approaches that different disability services professionals have in the context of different universities. And so I just would urge the office to consider that there isn't one model for how these services are provided in 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 every single university across the country or every single K through twelve institution. There are a range of factors around resources. There are a range of factors around the philosophy that offices take. And what this exemption can do with this particular modification is say to them making sure that your content is accessible to students with disabilities, if that's what you choose to do is is a legitimate exercise, and and please go ahead and do it, and don't feel like you have to go consult with council to make sure that it's strictly within the bounds of what the most narrow conception of of disability law might require.
Thank you, Mr. Cheney. Did you have a question you wanted to post?
Yeah, if I if I could, thank you, Ms. Chevey. If I could, Mr. Reed, just to follow up and sort of add to what we're talking about, and you added sort of towards the end there, most of our discussion has been about the university level accommodations. I don't know if you or your panelists could add more information about the K through twelve process as well, and and how that perhaps needs to be as flexible as possible, as it may take time for a five oh four plan to get worked out and for the accommodation to be made while a student can't participate effectively in a class. Can you talk more about that from the K through twelve from the perspective as well, that the student may not be very proactive at all in the first, second, or third grade, for example? Thank you.
So I I will have to caveat my response here with with our client is primarily represents disability services professionals in a higher education context. And so, you know, the 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 bulk of the the evidence that we've provided and the suggestions we've offered are geared in that direction. But I I don't think it it takes a big stretch to understand that many of these same dynamics and and often in worse circumstances occur in K through twelve contexts. When you think about the difficulty that, you know, adult college students may face in seeking accommodation and the some of the dynamics that you've just described, extend that in a virtual learning environment to every family of every school, school, every every child in a school ranging down to kids like like my my son, who's in kindergarten, who's five years old. When I see the the quantity of videos that that have been used in his class for virtual kindergarten, and I think through the immense complexity of, you know, just figuring out who to talk to at our school district, I, you know, it would, it would take me the better part of a day to track down a person who is nominally responsible for this. So the difficulties that are facing families that are already on the 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 wrong side of the the digital inclusion gap, who are struggling to get internet access, who are struggling to get access to equipment, who are struggling to access virtual learning, who are trying to deal with the burdens of childcare while they're, you know, while their their young children are trying to attend virtual school in the middle of the pandemic. And then on the other side, school districts who are facing significant funding shortfalls, significant funding gaps, and trying to do the best they can to often oftentimes, multiple times in the middle of the semester between virtual and in-person environments, shifting in new materials and not. These sorts of issues, I guarantee, are going to be on the list of school districts across the country this summer as they look forward to, how do we do hopefully, coming out of the pandemic, but we're not sure, school in the fall? How do we plan better for making sure that our students with disabilities don't get sort of left in the lurch as we shift these modalities, as we do hybrid stuff in the fall? So I I can't speak on on behalf of our our clients with specificity to the K through twelve context, but I'm fairly confident based on what we're seeing in a higher education context that those issues are likely to filter down. That's what I see as a as a parent, and Mr. Kepkala may have some additional thoughts to add there.
If it's okay, Mr. Reed, just Mr. Marks had his hand raised, and if I could, please remind people, if we could try to keep comments to around two minutes, just in the interest of time, the way we still have a lot to get to. Mr. Marks?
Thank you very much. I hope folks can hear me now. I understand I was having some audio problems. I just want to do add one quick clarification that we on in our discussions about proactive remediation and finding a work of mine, at least from AACS and DVD CCA's perspective, we were not saying that should be limited. So we had had agreed that for disability services for K through twelve, that 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 was included. Also, our position here. Thanks.
Okay, so just to to wrap up the focus, I think, Mr. Reed, you are suggesting on K through twelve, the school districts due to a need may have the same sort of good judgment that you would expect to see at a college or university level. Is that right?
I I think that's right.
Okay, um, maybe, Mr. Williams, and then I will hand it back to Ms.
Sure, thank you. So one thing that we did mention in our comments, and there was some response to it in the reply comments, is just the issue of what exactly is a reasonable level of security for the copies that are created during all of this. And I understand that it's usually not preferable to specify some individual brand of of TPM that must be used or to always get all the way into the weeds, and that's why we have a kind of reasonably sufficient standard right now. And I understand why the petitioners would would like to keep that somewhat open-ended. But given the increased number of copies that that are likely to be involved, and given that perhaps some K through twelve systems will not have a sophisticated understanding of TPMs, what's available and what they should be using, we do think it would be helpful to provide, you know, some recommendations or best practices, at least in the recommendation, as to what steps should be taken. Because if if all that's done for Because if if all that's done, for example, is is the copy is put on a website and the website requires a username and password, there's really no other layers of protection after that. Especially if downloads are enabled. We think it would be helpful that that there be some guidance that more than that would be a good standard to to use just to try to to protect these these copies. And then just very quickly on the proactive remediation and the standards for for who should be receiving these. As I mentioned at the outset, I I do have a bit of a concern with the 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 notion that pretty much every video shown to any class must always be remediated. Just because at some point that really does overlap with the proposal that we'll deal with deal with tomorrow that BYU made. And so I'd just like you guys to be cognizant cognizant of that as you think these issues through is that if if it really is that broad, which I can understand some services offices wanting to make sure, even if someone hasn't self reported that they're taken care of. I just like, you know, to for all of us to think about, how do we draw some lines here between the different classes?
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I I want to definitely focus on proactive remediation because we also want to get to questions about sufficient quality and market price. So if you could please try to keep concise responses, that would be great. So for the proponents for proactive remediation, the proposed changes you made to the language of the existing exemption do not expressly allow proactive remediation. So just for clarification, are you seeking that the either the record registers recommendation or that the preamble to the final rule make that clarification? Or are you asking for specific regulatory language changes, Mr. Reed?
So, oops, excuse me. I I wonder if I might call him Mr. Mr. Goodstein or Ms. Hamilton to to speak to the specific language. Sorry, I'm just just tracking it down. If one of you has it has it right in front of you.
Ms. Hamilton?
My apologies. I'm going to pass on to Mr. Goodstein, please.
Okay, Mr. Goodstein.
I apologize. The question came a little bit garbled through my speakers. Would you mind please repeating the question?
Sure. The question is, are you ask the proposed regulatory changes that you made to the existing exemption do not include a specific reference to allow proactive remediation? So my question is, are you asking for just clarification in the registers recommendation or the preamble to the final rule? Or are you asking for regulatory changes to allow proactive remediation? Mr. Reed.
I'm sorry, I've got the language in front of me now. I apologize for the for the the glitch there. I don't think that we ask for proactive remediation to be addressed specifically because of the other changes that we made to the exemption, including the removal of the specific call out to disability law. We think it's sort of implicit in the language that we've proposed. And then obviously some accompaniment with something in the recommendation that made that clear would be great. If if the office chooses to make a different formulation that approaches some of the issues we've talked about today in a different way, then it may be appropriate to ask to to include proactive remediation explicitly in the in the in the regulatory language. And I think we defer to the office as to how you are formulating the language, how you are balancing all the issues that we've talked about today. Depending on what other changes you make, it may make sense to include that specifically.
I'm so sorry. I I have to, we have to keep moving on. I'm sorry to interrupt. But going to the opponent, you have expressed concerns about proactive remediation. So if the office were to adopt DVD CCA's recommended approach that requires instructors to know or reasonably believe his or her course will make use of a particular work, would that be reasonable to address your concerns? Mr. Taylor, I see you have your hand raised. You're muted, Mr. Taylor.
I've been talking on Zoom for a year now. I still haven't learned to unmute myself before I talk, so I apologize. The absolutely, I mean, I think that is the point here that Mr. Reed was trying to make that if you did said, say, at the end of the exemption to create an accessible version for anticipated classroom use, then I think that kind of puts better contours around the proposed exemption and how it could facilitate the use. But at the same time, make sure that we don't create this blanket license for everything.
Mr. Williams, I'd like to see if you have a response, if that included language about the instructor reasonably believing that the motion picture would be used in a class, if that would address your concerns about proactive remediation.
Yes, I think to a large extent it would. As I said at the outset, we do think there should be some parameters to include something on a class syllabus. I think we're okay with it if an instructor has a reasonable belief that something's going to be used in a class. You know, I assume you would want to go a little bit beyond that with respect to students because it might be that a student has a need to use something in a class presentation or a project of some kind. So that should probably be be covered as well. But we do think it should stop short of, you know, an entire school's catalog of motion pictures being circumvented in advance without some kind of expectation of use in a in an actual class setting or on in a class project.
Because the proponents, thank you, Mr. Williams, the proponents do assert that the market check would still be like is still part of their proposal. So like I assume then the combination of including that or keeping that and then having like a an instructor reasonably leave that this motion picture would be used and would need an accessible version, that would be your concern then, Mr. Williams?
Yes, we we think the market check remains essential and that is a big helpful aspect of all of this and makes it easier for us to be agreeable. And then we just have to get into that issue of sufficient quality with the market check approach and and what that means.
Well, let's go ahead and turn to that. I believe my colleague, Mr. Gray, has some questions about the sufficient quality limitation.
Thanks, Anna. So for Mr. Reed, your proposed language clarified that circumvention would be permitted where the accessible version, you can't obtain an accessible version of quote unquote sufficient quality at a fair market price. So could you explain a little bit more, just sort of for the record, why this exemption is necessary? I know in your initial comments, you mentioned something about some institutions having confusion about when and when they cannot circumvent depending on the quality of the captions. And so it would be helpful to have a little bit more information about kind of how you see this applying and and why there's an adverse effect here.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. So I I want to quickly tag on because I think the answer to the previous question and the answer to this one are the same, which is we hope that the exemption would be formulated with reference to the judgment of the disability services professional who is making the use. That's who's eligible for the exemption. One thing on the previous one, we're not in principle opposed to what Mr. Williams and and Mr. Taylor laid out with respect to an instructor expressing a a need to use this in class. That's a pretty typical scenario. But we want to leave that judgment in the hands of the disability services professional, that there's a reasonable belief that this is going to be needed for for some kind of educational purposes. Likewise, with respect to quality. The piece that we'd like to underscore about quality is that this is not an objective standard, right? This is not an objective process. I think as anyone who has gone through in the K through 12 context and IEP plan for their child, it's a very individualized process. And this is so true, also true in a university context. This is a conversation with a disability services professional about what a student needs in class. And so the question about quality is, a video might be getting used in different contexts, right? It might be getting used in a cinema class where where particular nuances about the sound design or the caption or or the dialogue are very important and having the utmost care around the the quality of the captions is really important. We've also heard scenarios where someone might look at this and say, gee, this falls way short. The captions on this video are are really terrible and are 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 short of what, for example, the FCC might expect if it were aired on broadcast television. But the student says, no, this is okay. This is actually good enough for me because I'm just hard of hearing and I'm just using the captions to help kind of fill in some blanks. So actually, the we we don't need to remediate this one. So what we're asking for with respect to quality and Mr. Gray, I apologize, I've diverged from your your question a little bit. Is is basically to allow the subjective judgment of the are the reasonable judgment of the disability services professional to say, with this video in this with this student, with this class or with this particular set of students that that might be likely to take this class, that we need to really burnish the captions here and we really need to make them better. Or alternatively to say, you know what, the for this context, that's it's actually not necessary for us to do it. So we we want to leave that judgment in the hands of the disability services professional.
Great. So you mentioned the FCC regulations or the the proposal, I think, from the Disability Advisory Committee. I have two questions kind of to follow up on that. So the first one is, so I understand your position that you kind of wanted to defer to the judgment of the professionals where we can. If the office considered maybe being a little bit more explicit and did something like defining insufficient quality as insufficient to fulfill the institutions like ADA obligations or sort of keeping that the penumbra of disabilities laws that we discussed earlier, would that be sufficient? Would that be reasonable? Would there be some gaps there?
Yeah, I'd suggest that the office not do that approach. And and the reason I would suggest that is because the disability laws that are referenced and you sort of point to the penumbra don't have detailed regulations for the quality of accommodations, right? The Department of Justice hasn't promulgated, for example, detailed regulations about the quality of descriptions or captions. I think if you wanted to make reference to our allusion to the FCC standards, I think those are the those are the the closest thing we have to an objective set of standards for captioning out there. For description, we've got that Disability Advisory Committee recommendation, which is kind of a start. But I I would urge you not to frame it in terms of compliance with those standards because those standards are in significant part recommendations and best practices for captioners. So for example, they they there are just lots of suggestions for people who are creating the the descriptions and the captions. They're not the kind of standards that you could sit down and really carefully after the fact say for this context, for this student, for this video, if we sort of put it through the rubric of the standard, it it complied or it didn't. And actually, if you look at the the FC stand CC standards, even for broadcast television, they ask questions about, well, were the errors de minimis? Is this part of a pattern of what the station does for all the people involved following best practices and so on and so forth? So I would just urge you not to peg compliance with those standards as the keystone because it's a very hard question to calculate whether something is compliant or not, right? And I I'd urge you to talk to the folks at the FCC about the the holes in these standards. And one of the things we've actually asked the FCC to do is to promulgate more objective metrics for evaluating television stations. But that doesn't exist yet. So we've got, we've got loose standards that are going to be difficult to apply in context. And that's why we think referring to the judgment of the disability services professional is a better way to approach this.
Great. And so I see, Mr. Band, you want to respond. And then after you do, Mr. Chaney, I I'd be happy to talk to you and have you ask any questions you have.
Yes, thank you. So both this line of questioning and and the the questions dealing with the preemptive remediation almost seem to suggest that 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 all of these activities by the by the disability services office are without a cost, like that they could just go ahead and do whatever they want. They have limitless budgets, limitless time. And that they would do more than they need to apps than than the absolute minimum that they need to do to fulfill their their legal obligation, their moral obligation to to satisfy educational needs. But that's not the the real world. In the real world, budgets are tight, time is tight. And they just need, you know, they're only going to do what they absolutely need to do. They're not going to remediate something, you know, when they think, oh, you know, yeah, the quality isn't quite as good as it could be. I mean, they're all going to do it if it really doesn't, whatever is available doesn't meet the students' needs. And and that's that's the reality of the disability services offices. And that's the reality that, you know, that 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 the office should be bringing to this situation and and make it as as, you know, the the least burdensome approach to, you know, because there is this enormous burden out there. There's enormous constraint out there, which is the budgetary constraint that operates on 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 the DSOs.
And so I I see we have two more hands raised. I just want to remind everyone, we are technically only have seven minutes left in this panel and we haven't gotten to the reasonable effort, fair price issue. So very quickly, Mr. Williams, if you could respond, but I just want to make sure we're staying on time.
Yes, thank you. So as we said in our comments, we do, we would prefer some kind of standard here, but we we do understand where the other participants are coming from on this. And we certainly don't want to suggest that the disability services officers are commonly engaging in improper conduct. And I understand what Jonathan said, but that's certainly not what we're suggesting. On the other hand, we we do think, you know, regulations for a number of reasons should have some should, they should be spelled out in a way that people can understand them. And so the FCC guidelines on captioning, the the forty seven CFR section seventy nine point one standards, they do include a lot of what I understand to be the important issues, not in a granular way, but they say, you know, synchronicity is important, completeness is important, placement is important, those kinds of things that I think are commonly understood to and accuracy. And so, you know, my one concern, although I take the issue seriously, is is if the minimus errors are are a huge problem, I think you could probably find what I would consider to be a de minimis error in potentially every single captioned or described work. And so, you know, that does really bump into the marketplace check requirement and and depending on someone's point of view could could you know, undermine that market check requirement. So that's where we're coming from. We'd like to be as reasonable as we can.
Great, Mr. Cap Cala, would you like to respond quickly?
Yeah, and I understand that. I actually think the more reasonable a approach is probably the opposite in some ways. So we are, just to provide a context. This semester was the first semester where we used some third party remediation and it cost to to Mr. Van's point, it cost us about two grand to do fifteen videos. So we're certainly not looking to caption videos that don't need to be captioned as that becomes an expensive prospect. But one thing our office does have to do by law is engage in an interactive, individualized process with individuals when they request an accommodation. And as part of that, when it's reasonable to do so and possible to do so, we can adjust accommodations and should adjust accommodations to meet students' needs. And students are given primary consideration under the ADA for determining what is and isn't effective. And so that would include captioning. So there, if there's a blanket standard in place, you know, there may be things for a student, for instance, who's deaf who's using ASL, ASL is their first language, English is their second language. There may be things that they need that we can do just in the way that we break lines or time captions that would allow that individual to better process the information in the captions that would be not necessarily our standard way of captioning, but would still be possible. It's also a two way street, right? So as Mr. Reed mentioned, there are a number of students who will tell us, you know, I don't think I need captions in this context or this class or, yeah, they're they're good enough. Don't worry about them. And we might be looking at them and cringing and thinking, these are awful. But we don't twist the student's arm. If the student says they're effective, then they're effective. I think if there were stricter rules in place, then we would feel obligated to make new captions regardless because we would want the captions to to abide by those rules. But to Mr. Williams's point, we we don't want to caption things. We don't have the resources, the personnel, the 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 money, the budgetary considerations to caption things that don't really need it. So we wouldn't, of course, go, oh, look, three missing commas in these captions, better go go caption these. You know, we would only caption things when it it served a specific need or purpose.
Great. And then my next question, I guess, is for for Mr. Reed, or if you want to have your students answer this, you can. You know, in your written comments, you talked a little bit about kind of examples of videos that don't have, you know, sufficient quality captions. Could you just speak a little bit more, you know, for the for the sake of providing a record here, like, you know, what sort of captions, audio descriptions are we talking about? Are we talking about items that are represented as maybe, you know, having audio descriptions that aren't? Are we talking about audio general auto auto? Are we talking about auto-generated ones on like a YouTube video? You know, what sort of the library or sort of the spectrum of works that we're talking about here?
So I mean, I think if your question, Mr. Gray, is directed at the kinds of captioning and description errors that we might be concerned with, I actually think the FCC documents that we pointed to give you a pretty good spectrum of the kinds of problems that can happen. So with captions, you know, obviously, we're not talking about missing captions here because then we're in the exemption, no matter what. But we're talking about incomplete captions, missing words, misspellings of proper nouns, lack of punctuation. If you turn on the closed captions of this Zoom conference and the captioner is doing a very nice job, but they're not synchronous, right? They're delayed. And so that may impair understanding. There may be, if we're talking about automatic speech recognition generated captions, there may be places where the ASR engine just goes off the rails and starts captioning, not what's being said. Depending on the context, we may be talking about speaker identification, missing or missing sound effects that may be really important to understanding and so on and so forth. Description, same sort of things that you might imagine. I always say picture is worth 1,000 words and you've got 24 or 30 frames a second worth of things flying by on the screen. And you've got to make particular decisions about what to say about what's happening. And depending on the context, you may not be getting the most important thing. You may not be speaking in a way that's clear. You may not be identifying key information that's important for a particular context. So I think those are the kinds of errors that we see and urge you to just hop onto YouTube and turn on the captions on a given video and you will probably see the kinds of things that Mr. Capkala and his colleagues encounter on a daily basis. And I think honestly, when we're talking about description, go look on YouTube and see if you could find description. You won't even find a button because most of the videos that you will find on YouTube are not described. So for the most part, when we're talking about description, we're probably talking about missing descriptions. But again, you may have a blind or visually impaired student that needs them for a particular context and the track that's included, for example, on a disc may not be sufficient because it's missing key information.
Great, thank you. So I think we're just going to go over about five minutes so we can ask a few more questions about reasonable effort. And then I want to make sure, I think Mr. Shani had his hand raised earlier and I want to make sure he has the chance to ask any final questions. So, you know, in your comments, you propose clarifying the reasonable effort language to specifically address, you know, when someone buys perhaps like a textbook and there's an accompanying audiovisual work that comes with it that may not be captioned. So can you describe more, you know, is this addressing uncertainties around digital text service media generally? Is this sort of this one specific circumstances? You know, if you could give us a little bit more information to kind of clarify like what the situation looks like and how often it happens, that would be helpful.
I'm going to go fast here, Ms. Hamilton. Please chime in if I miss anything. This, so I think the reasonable market check has actually been fairly easy for folks to comply with thanks to the language that the office included in the last recommendation for most videos, which is, you know, you go on Amazon Prime, you go on Netflix, you go on Hulu, you look for, is this available on a commercial platform? Can, and the answer is sort of yes, sort of no. I think the circumstance that we are a little bit worried about here and the feedback that we've gotten from some of ATSP's members on this is that when they're dealing with videos that are associated with a textbook, that commercial availability search looks different. It means you pick up the phone and you call a publisher, right? Because the kinds of videos that are typically included in a textbook are not the kind of things that would be on Netflix or Hulu or Amazon Prime or that sort of thing. You're going to call the publisher and say, hey, do you have a version of this video that has got captions for it? And what we are worried about is just having some contours on how that conversation can go and making sure that that conversation can't be, well, we know about this, we know about this reasonable market search requirement and we're going to demand from you a higher price than it would cost you to caption it yourself. And we'll do it for you, but you need to pay us a premium for it. I think that's the circumstance that folks are worried about. And so we would welcome any sort of clarification from the office of just when the reasonable market search is necessarily a conversation and not just a searching commercial platforms to see, yes or no, is it available? What are the terms of that negotiation? What's acceptable for a textbook publisher to charge? And just to make sure that disability services offices aren't stuck in an uncomfortable position of saying, gee, because I think Mr. Capkala would say, if a publisher has the captioned or described version of the video and is willing to hand it over, they will take that 10 times out of 10. But we want to make sure that the situation doesn't arise where they say it's going to cost you more than what would be a reasonable amount for you to do it yourself. Maybe Mr. Capkala has got clarification on that.
Sure. And but quickly, just to kind of follow up on that, could you clarify a little, just a little bit more, you know, is this a situation that has happened? And so we're talking about something that we know has happened and may happen again? Or are we talking sort of future looking, we expect this will happen, or you expect this will happen?
So I think this was born out of questions from ATSP's members about how to approach these conversations, just to know what is reasonable. Mr. Capkala may be able to speak more to that.
Mr. Capkala?
Yeah, so I do think it is, you know, largely forward-looking, although we have had to reach out to textbook publishers to ask that they caption materials. And in those situations, you know, if the student has purchased the textbook and that textbook comes with online video, then that student shouldn't, it would be discriminatory to ask that student to then pay for, you know, video content that's made available to every other student already just because they have a disability. And so our position is that the video should have captions on it. And if it doesn't, then we should be allowed to make those captions and we shouldn't have to pay for that. We're not talking about, from our perspective, I mean, I've already purchased plenty of movies, you know, off Amazon and, you know, sent students, you know, credit on Amazon to watch a movie with captions when the version that the instructor was using didn't have captions or something. That's not a problem. We're happy to do that if an existing one exists. We would rather pay $2.99 than spend seven hours or 14 hours captioning a two-hour video. That's a good deal for us every time. But if there is a textbook, and it's also a time matter, you know, in the case of the textbook publisher that we reached out to, it was going to take them two weeks to get us those captions. Well, by that point, that lesson's over and the students moved on to something else. We can have those captions done much quicker. And so that would be another, you know, wrinkle to that.
Great. And then, Mr. Shani, would you like to ask any last questions you had?
I think we're over time and I think my questions have been answered by the panels in the interim. So I think I'm good.
Thank you. We appreciate everyone's participation and also since of the time, we're going to conclude now. And I just want to explain, since this is our first break, our break is now 55 minutes long. So everyone can, you know, when we're done, we can turn our videos off and we can make sure to mute people. But we will still have a live feed. This live feed will be the same feed for the whole day. And so what we're going to do is in about 25 minutes, at 12:15 Eastern, anyone who's on the second panel, which is for Class 17, should hop back on. We're going to do an audio check and do a run-through to make sure that we are fully set up to have an accessible hearing for the second, the second one of the day. So thank you again for the participation. So everyone now can turn off the video and mute, and we will reconvene if you're in the audience at 12:45 Eastern and at 12:15 hop back on if you are a panelist for the next time. Thank you.